With the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman, absent. President Wallace.
Here. The first item on our committee agenda is under Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Mr.
Trustee Cammerer.
Thank you, President Wallace. We do have three items under the Planning and Zoning. And the first would be the Developer Donation Ordinance update, of which I'm going to pass over to Jim and let him give us a little more information on that.
Thank you, Trustee Cammerer. The village currently has a Developer Donation Ordinance, or some people call it an impact fee ordinance as part of its subdivision code. From time to time, the village is required, or does, a land appraiser appraisal of current land transactions in the village and interjects that land appraiser appraisal as part of our developer donations to set the value of the acreage of land, particularly for the school and park land donation, or their land in lieu of, or cash in lieu of land donation. At this point, there's also a clause that people can challenge that value of the land in the ordinance. Currently, we're at $200,000 of land with a $50,000 improvement cost, or infrastructure cost. Orleans Homes wants to build in the enclave subdivision. It's a 17-lot subdivision that basically went up, that the previous developer went bankrupt, the bank took it back. Orleans is in a process of negotiating the purchase, Orleans, the 17-lot enclave subdivision. And they have looked at our current Developer Donation Ordinance, which last had an appraisal done in 2006, and the ordinance was adopted in 2007. Land values were a lot higher then. We hired consultant McCann Appraisals, Mike McCann's in the audience. He did a land value appraisal for us at the request of the village attorney and the staff. After we got a challenge from Orleans Homes, he came up with a land value of $160,000. It's a little down from the 2007, but a lot higher than the $98,000 that Orleans Homes appraiser came up with. We've prepared a draft ordinance interjecting the McCann current $160,000 amount in the land cash portion of the ordinance. We've checked with the school district and park district, who benefit the most from the land and the cash in lieu of land portion. They are okay with the $160,000 figure. They thought it would be much lower when they were first approached by other developers on this land value. And with doing that, we've put the value in the ordinance. The land impact, the land cash impact is only school and park. There is still a village, there is still a library, there's still a fire, there's still a school cash, which is a school construction section of the ordinance. There's a police section. Those dollar values all stay the same. They're based on budgetary evaluations. So the only two items in the land cash ordinance that are affected are the school cash, our school land, and park land. With that $160,000 per acre figure interjected into the ordinance, a home that would be built by Orleans, a four-bedroom home that would be built by Orleans, would pay a $20,728.67 developer impact fee to the village upon getting a building permit. That's down about $5,730.86 from the 2007 ordinance. So we are putting that out for discussion. The village attorney has a memo that is sent to the board that he can elaborate on, but that's the gist of where we're headed with this Developer Donation Ordinance.
I've got a question, Jim. If someone was building just one house and it was a new lot, would they still have to pay this too? Or is it because the developer's a little small subdivision? Is there a certain number that triggers this? Or is it one house and same rules apply?
If the lot was created in a subdivision and it was a vacant lot in a subdivision that came under this ordinance, they would have to pay it. On lots that existed prior to our ordinances, they, prior to this ordinance, which goes back, the initial one went back to 1987, say if it's an old lot in the village, they wouldn't necessarily have to pay it. It's only on created subdivisions that came in after the Developer Impact Fee Ordinance was implemented back in '87. So there's very few lots like that in the village.
Right.
So. I will say the one thing about Orleans Homes that's unique about this development, and why they challenged it, is that they do have a recapture fee of about $11,000 per lot, because back in the mid-2000s, the village put in the water system that serves this area, and they had to, they have to re, Kipling, who was the previous developer, has to reimburse the village, had to reimburse the village for that water system that impacts that subdivision on a per-lot basis. Orleans will still have to pay that. And most of the infrastructure is in, and the subsequent measure on the agenda is their public improvement completion agreement and new letter of credit, dollar amount, which will guarantee them putting in the rest of the infrastructure. So they still have to follow the rest of the subdivision ordinance, put in the rest of the infrastructure, and pay that impact fee. It's a little unique in that some developments don't have a recapture fee, or the developer doesn't have, hadn't put in the infrastructure.
How much is their letter of credit, MB Financial?
Originally it was-
I think their letter of credit is around $718,000.
That's what's left, but originally it was around a million.
Million, two or something, originally. Kipling put that up.
Well, that's a plus that they agreed to, um-
Yes, they will maintain the letter of credit that's in that value. We've had our village engineer has done an extensive investigation of the infrastructure that's out there and valued how much we should maintain in the letter of credit to make sure it's put in properly.
Most of the public improvements are installed. The punch list that's attached later to that PICA, Public Improvement Completion Agreement, has to do with making sure, because it's sat there for so long, that some of those improvements that are in are working properly. So there's pressure testing, there's things of that nature. There's a, some of the sidewalks in, and the base course of asphalt is actually up to the bottom of the curb. So we don't want the final surface in before you build the houses, otherwise they get all torn up, and there's, so, most of the public improvements are actually installed, but for a little stretches of sidewalks that would also get torn up as houses get built. So, but because they have to complete full phases, that's why the amount of the letter of credit is relatively high, considering how many of the public improvements are actually installed. So, you know, from a legal standpoint, without getting into the detail of my memo, I would suggest that it's prudent to approve of Mr. McCann, who's sitting in the front row there, his new report, incorporate that into an amendment to the donation ordinance. For developments other than this one, the number for this portion that we're talking about, which is the cash in lieu of land, the number will be 210,000, because it'll be the $160,000 figure that Mr. McCann arrived at, plus $50,000 to run the utility from one side of the site to the far side of the site. What's unique about this site, as Jim was just pointing out, is these utilities are already in, so that distinguishes this, and would in a sense be double counting if you were gonna charge 160 plus another 50 when they've got a recapture fee and the utilities are actually in the ground. So, and I've spoken to the attorneys for the park district as well as U-46, and they are on board with the new figures, and the village administrator is adamant that we look at this on a regular basis as the real estate market improves, and that was reiterated by the school district as well.
What are the range of the homes, price-wise?
I don't know exactly, but they're four-bedroom homes, around 2,600 square foot. I'm guessing that they will probably go in the low threes and maybe higher. Orleans will set those price points once the market's there. There are 17 homes, they'll go fast. There's a school close by, within walking distance, and a park and forest preserves, and it's a, they call it the enclave, because it's a nice little enclave of the village.
Any other discussion from the board? No. I would move that we pass this on to the next board meeting and for a vote.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing we have is the Orleans Home Completion and Development of the Enclave of Bartlett Subdivision, which I think you can go into more discussion with that here again, can't you, Jim?
Thank you, Trustee Cammerer. Again, the subdivision ordinance requires a public improvement completion agreement for any developer that comes in that wants to subdivide property and put in the public improvements, and we require the guarantee of the completion of those improvements, not only with a dollar amount of the letter of credit, based on the engineer's estimate of cost plus 10%, but we also put it in the form of an agreement. Some people may call it a contract with the developer. Orleans Homes would like to put in place this public improvement completion agreement, which again, I put the subdivision up on the, on the board, and I don't know what happened to my pointer, but you can see it's a 17-lot subdivision. The road system is, is in, there it is. The road, as Brian said, the road system is in for the most part. Right here, this road is in, coming off of Gerber, Army Trails down here. This drive comes all the way through to this cul-de-sac. Fair Oaks Road is a right-of-way dedication that has been dedicated, but this road is not part of their improvement. It is a longstanding part of right-of-way on a village plan that we wanted to have Fair Oaks go all the way up to, to north to meet with Schick Road and go over the railroad tracks. They are dedicating this right-of-way. This will just remain grass. They'll put in sidewalks throughout the subdivision and build the 17 lots. There's some wetlands, so it's a nice kind of little enclave, named appropriately. But the public improvement completion agreement talks about their improvements that they still have to do. The village engineer's checklist of the items that need to be completed is attached as part of this public improvement completion agreement. As I stated, they will have to put up the letter of credit and maintain it, and the amount of $719,157. It's an agreed-upon amount with our village engineer and with Orleans engineers, and we'll work through, once we approve this, it'll go on record. They'll have to maintain the letter of credit, and then eventually, they will work towards getting the development completed in terms of the infrastructure and then building the homes. Do you have any questions? I'll try to answer.
Any questions with the board?
The second inspection date's already happened on July 24th, and that's where we got this punch list.
The red is the new, are the new items.
Yeah, this, this punch list is a work in progress. The original one was March 23rd, and because as we moved closer to the date when Orleans wanted to start, you know, is going to take control of the property, Bob went out there and did an updated one in July, and, and added some, some items. As Brian said, those things sit there and nobody's doing much. They erode, there's maintenance problems, so we added those to the punch list to keep it up to date. We've worked with several developers on this, and Orleans is the closest to actually purchasing it and getting it from the bank.
MB Financial owns it now?
Yes.
Yes.
When would they anticipate breaking ground? Breaking ground?
I think they, Mr.-
Hey, got the man with the answers.
Good evening. My name is Bernie Pelleri, and I'm with Orleans Homes. I don't have all the answers, but I'll do my best to give you those. You know, right now, we're still in negotiation with the bank. I think getting the agreements in place with the municipality here tonight, I think that will allow us to move forward. I know our attorneys worked very close with the village attorney to work these agreements. I personally have reviewed the punch list, and I would be personally completing that work, dealing with the infrastructure. So we're keenly aware of it. We're working to move forward as, as we get through the board process and then finalize with the, with the bank. We would, you know, like to move forward based on those facts. So earlier, you know, square footage anywhere from 2,600 to 3,200, based on, you know, market conditions, and, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged to hear staff say that we'll go through it very fast. So I'm, I'm not in the sales department, but that's good to hear. Market's definitely improving. I've worked in Bartlett for a long time. It's a very exciting community, and we're encouraged on the opportunity to be here along with you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the gentleman from Orleans? Thank you.
Well, there's no other questions, and I'd move that we pass this on to a board meeting in the future for a vote.
Thank you.
And the final thing from Planning and Zoning is a zoning ordinance text amendment on medical cannabis. And Jim, our staff would like to take that over. Jim?
As you all know, recently, the governor signed the medical cannabis law into, in the state of Illinois. I don't know how many states have this law, but Illinois's law was recently coming on the books and will take effect January 1st, 2014. The law basically allows for medical cannabis cultivation centers and dispensaries to be located throughout the state of Illinois. There is 22 cultivation centers that will be selected by the Department of Agriculture, and one for each state police district in the state, and then 60 dispensing centers. A lot of communities have been talking about this, discussing it, whether or not, how to control, because it does apply local zoning, controls do apply to it. Obviously, our ordinance, since this is a new phenomenon in Illinois, our current ordinance doesn't address it. We felt in discussions at the staff level that we should look at the law, map out where the centers could possibly be located, based on the language in the law, and if they were to come to Bartlett, we should have something in place that would require them to go through a review process. So as any good zoning person will do, and followed on advice by a good municipal lawyer, they make it a special use, and then you can put conditions on it. So that's what we're doing here. I will explain the maps, because we had our GIS person, Christie Stone, look at the law, and for the, what I've got here is the cultivation center locations. Based on the law, they have to be a certain distance away from residentially zoned properties, certainly, a certain distance away from schools, and a certain distance away from daycare centers, 2,500 feet, sorry. So when you map that out in the village of Bartlett, you end up with a portion of our industrially zoned Brewster Creek Business Park as the only location that these centers could go through, could, could locate at legally in the, in the law as it stands today. So this map would be where if somebody wanted to do a cultivation center and this special use request was adopted, they would have to look at a piece in here and go through a special use request from the village. Subsequently, the dispensaries are permitted in areas that are within a thou, they cannot be located within 1,000 feet of a school or daycare center, or located in a residential area, which is a good thing. And so the dispensaries have a little broader area that they could locate. Again, when we looked at our maps, it's the industrially zoned areas in Brewster Creek. So a dispensary, if they came to the village and we adopted this ordinance, they would have to locate a spot in this Brewster Creek area and then come to you for a special use permit. We've provided definitions. Those definitions basically come right out of the state law. We would adjust the light industry, industrial, and the I-2 Economic Overlay District as special uses, and then move forward if you desire to send this on to the zoning board of appeals for a public hearing on the text amendment. And again, this law comes in effect January 1st of this year. I'm sure there's people positioning themselves for where these things are going to be located. It will be licensed, regulated, and taxed by the state of Illinois through an excise tax system for the cultivation centers, and probably a similar, like a cigarette tax for the dispensaries. You have to have a certain type of illness in order to get a prescription for this. It can't be sold without a prescription, and you are only allowed two and a half ounces every two weeks.
Boy, you checked it out thoroughly, huh?
The law is over 200 pages, and I will actually say I had a lot of help from our police department and Sergeant Brett Callis, who did a thorough research of the law. And we didn't give you the state law, because it's so thick, there's a lot of amendments, but-
Jim, did you do any other research?
I didn't do any other research, no.
Jim, I have a question as far as the cultivation center. Is that actually, would that be an agricultural, it would be a farm, basically?
Yes.
And so-
It'll all be indoor.
Excuse me?
Climate-controlled indoors.
Would it be, it would be climate-controlled indoors facilities, I see, all right. I was wondering how it would be maintained? If you've got a crop, you can't, without fencing it and everything else, but if you're gonna do hydroponics and everything else and do it inside, I can see how it'd work. I understand.
There's a lot of required security measures. It has to be monitored 24 hours, fenced, and alarmed. It's all in the law for these dispense, for the cultivation center.
Do we have any sense of how soon after January 1st, is it the state police who will begin to have some input on where these go, for the location?
I think it's state, it would be told.
Yeah, it's, I think the selection for the cultivation centers falls within the purview of the Department of Agriculture.
How big is our state police area? Are we Elgin, five, five cities?
That I don't know.
Two counties?
District three, Elgin. So I have to go up through Elgin, up in the state, or district?
Okay. Do we have to permit these uses in the village?
I'll let our attorney answer that.
Well, probably not. The law doesn't spell that out. It says there's some zoning control. It's my, the way it's written, it would appear that you couldn't just ban them, or you may be challenged on that. So analogous to perhaps adult uses, where you can't ban them, but you can put them where they're least intrusive on people. And so there was staff debate about commercial versus industrial, and also whether we could in fact ban them. And there's not a clear answer on that, but the way the law's written and the powers given to the state, I think if one wanted to put it here and our law, rather, our zoning ordinance said that they weren't allowed, period, I think you may have trouble defending that. So I think this is the best approach. I've talked, talked to other municipal lawyers, and, and they are of the same opinion, that rather than ban it, that you could put it in certain limited locations, and then as part of the special use process, can come up with reasonable conditions that would address some of your concerns, if it is even one of the limited number that would be selected. They're gonna go, even though it's throughout the state, they're gonna probably concentrate them more in the Chicagoland area because of the higher population concentration, so.
But we could say yes to one and no to the other, right? Or we could make it hard-
I, I wouldn't say that. I doubt that, I think it's so unlikely because of the limited number throughout the state if you would ever get two in Bartlett, if any.
One of the things that I brought up to staff when I read this was trying to find out what the registration process is for dispensaries and cultivation centers, you know, so we can get an idea if any of these could potentially be coming our way, and find out who is registered to be one of those licensed distributors or growers. So I think that that's what we're gonna try to do, right? See if there's-
I think that's right. We need to understand very clearly where the decision, besides the Department of Agriculture, and where the other decision in terms of the dispensary is being made, and try to talk to those folks and get some heads up, so that we aren't just suddenly hit with someone who says, "Yeah, I fit within your I-1, I want to go through your process." It would be, as you suggest, Mayor, a good idea to have a sense that this is coming.
Yeah, I would think that there's probably some pretty big companies and maybe some fly-by-nights, from what I'm hearing in other states. The fly-by-nights go away and get in trouble, and some big companies to kind of take it over. So there's gotta be some kind of a registration process saying, "Hey, if it's in Illinois, and if it's in Bartlett, I want to be first," you know, whatever state.
They have to register with the Department of Financial and Professional Regulations.
Can we find out with that registration process where they intend on operating from?
I don't think they've written the rules yet.
They're not there yet.
Okay.
But we can keep an eye on that.
We can track it. There's a, there's an online site that you can follow the action, so to speak, and that's what I've been going on. I think the governor has made it clear that he wants the law to go into effect. It's primarily to help wounded veterans and people with Gulf War Syndrome, and that, that's where, that's why he signed the law. So we can keep a handle on that. There is an ongoing website as to who's doing what.
And I think it's important to have your ordinance in place before the effective date of the new law, because I think those looking, if there's a municipality that has nothing, then they will be, they will have a hard time restricting it at all, and they may be more prone to get one than one where it's a limited area that may not be what the applicant is looking for. So I think it's important to have it in place so they, we have rules there before this even starts. It may dissuade people from coming to town.
Is there anything that's keeping us from drafting a mock ordinance for the next committee of the whole meeting?
Uh, yes. This is, in this packet, you have one, but it has to go to the ZBA, because it's a text amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this is basic, this is a pretty simple ordinance, as draft ordinance, but as Brian said, the zoning board has to hear, have a public hearing on it.
Right. And then it can come back relatively soon, but we'll have the timeframe that staff has on agendas. It'll be back well in time to pass before the effective date.
From what you're telling us, I think, Brian, it's not a, it's gonna be kind of a touchy way to get around having any of these located in Bartlett, I'm assuming, so it's not gonna be a zoning board back to us and, okay. It's probably gonna have to go back and forth a little bit to-
I think it will be relatively simple, and the draft ordinance is relatively simple. I don't think there'll be that much difficulty coming it back unless you got, you, the village board has, yeah, I could be wrong, but I don't think there will be a lot of back and forth.
Chief, do we have any statistics, crime going up, these coming to town, or, I mean, you know, other states have obviously walked the same path as we're walking. I don't know, can you, can you find anything, or?
Illinois, at least not bigger, is much more highly restricted than the other states that came off first. I think a lot of the people in America are familiar with those states. I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect, but if there is an, you know, it is changing. But I can tell you, in other states, it wasn't so highly restricted, so multiple centers throughout residential neighborhoods to the point that the police would almost give up unforcement because they were having the upheaval of this in their window. And I think that got really sketchy and pretty confusing, of course. I can tell you, this is an effort to avoid that confusion, I ran into 22 in state police districts. I believe it's only one per district that has a pattern of that.
That's correct.
So I think they are looking to, I agree with you, considering that this might be a huge confusion for law enforcement, how you defend the laws that do exist. I think there's an attempt, a true attempt to address that.
That's good to know. That's good to know.
Any other discussion on this? And if not, then I would say that we need to move this on to the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we move it to the zoning board for their review.
And that is...
And that's all I have.
And so, the next item on the committee of the whole agenda is finance and under finance and golf. And, yeah, Chairman Aaron, our ranking.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item that we have on finance and golf this evening is video gaming terminals at the Bartlett Mills Golf Club. And with that, I'll turn the discussion over to staff.
Bob, you want to talk a little bit about that, and then we can go through some of the numbers?
Yes, the video gaming, since its inception here in the state of Illinois, we're always looking as a staff for additional revenue centers to help our operation out, as the golf industry is still trying to climb out of its 10-year recession year. But this is certainly a potential revenue source and certainly adding another element of entertainment for our 50,000-plus people that go through our clubhouse on a yearly basis. We feel that video gaming would fit well into what we do there. It would fit well into our existing opportunities there and activities that go on there. We feel we can control those machines well. They'd be situated...if we went ahead with something like this, they would be situated in the bar area. We could handle up to the maximum of five machines in there. In the bar area, of course, they're in constant view of appropriate staff, and also they're close to food beverage operation, our bar operation. The users would also be easily accessible to our food and beverage, our food and beverage with its...with the type of operation menu that we offer, I think would be a good fit with it, too. We feel, too, that, you know, it would be an additional opportunity for our guests. We also feel, too, that it wouldn't interfere with major events that go on there at the golf course, where we can...we can close that off at the request of that particular function, especially if the function is a facility-only function, if it's the only facility going on there, and their request would be to not have those operating. We could certainly do that. We could certainly close the clubhouse off to outside and just have it available to the private party. There's a lot of things that we can do as a staff to operate around these things. We feel it's an opportunity for a financial...to help our financial well-being out there, and that's kind of where we're at right now. It can be done. We certainly have the room for it. We would lose a couple of tables in the bar, putting these machines in against that east wall, but we could also offset that by high tops and stools and that type of thing, so we wouldn't lose seating in there. And also add a couple of bar stools at the bar to also enhance seating in there, too. So, I think the type of people that play golf tend to be a little bit...they tend to enjoy the gaming concept, especially after talking to them for years and years and years. They do like that type of entertainment and activity, and I think we could truly benefit in many ways for it, so...
Yes, my only question would be, I know that there's certain signage and stuff that you have to have. I think that's at the cost of the village, right? Have we estimated what that would cost to make sure that there's...
What they require you to do is either have a stanchion to separate it from the rest of the drinking facility.
I'm sorry, a what?
A stanchion, you know, a rope.
Oh, yeah.
Like a rope or something?
Or a line on the floor, and we have seen different facilities in Bartlett use different things. In addition to a sign, that's really all that's required.
Okay.
The only question that I have is if we put these machines in...there's a lot of young people that show up at this place. Is there any conflict?
Are working there.
Well, I mean, during the summertime, we're going to have kids that want to play golf. Are they allowed even in that area, or is it already restricted because it's the bar area?
No, under 21 is allowed in the bar area, but that's why we have to be specific on the boundaries of those machines in there, and that would be up to staff to do there, to be very diligent as far as anybody, you know, even approaching those machines that might be underage, that type of thing. That would be staff's responsibility, no question about it.
It would look bad if we got the first fine for the village.
It would. It would.
It was inferred a little earlier that there was somewhat of a waiting list to get the machines. What kind of a waiting list are we looking at, or waiting time are we looking for if this was approved?
That waiting time is growing even as we speak. The last time I heard, it was four or five months, and my guess is that for people putting in applications now, it's probably at least six months.
Yeah.
I'm all in favor of doing whatever we can to enhance the revenue over at the golf course, but I'm concerned about the place starting to look cheap. You know, we don't want it to look like Vegas, even though Vegas isn't necessarily cheap. Can we set this up so that there's a trial period, so maybe we do this for a season or two seasons rather than commit to the long haul? Do we rent this equipment? Do we buy the equipment? What's...can we do this on an interim basis and just see how it turns out?
Absolutely. We could look at having some of the shortest lease. The other thing you might want to consider is that we showed you the maximum of five, you gave you figures for five. It doesn't have to be five. If you think that, you know, relative to an aesthetic perspective, you know, four is better, or three is better, that might be something you would consider as well. So, we certainly would look at the shortest lease term that we have available with those.
Yeah, and just so you know, Trustee Ranky, the terminal operators are the ones that bear the expense of the machine, except for the electricity, of course, because those machines are running constantly.
Right. We hope.
The terminal operators provide them, they set them up, they get them set, and it's all good to go. But I...my own personal preference would be three would probably look better in there than five. That's just my opinion from looking at this picture. It seems a little crowded in there with five machines against that wall. And I would also want to potentially make sure that we aren't stepping on the toes of any of our local residents, residential bars that have the gaming machines.
Does Villa Olivia have?
Do not.
Can we beat the park district to it? Yeah.
I have a question. Are these real numbers? Are these the projected ones? Do we have any real numbers yet? The machines have been out for, what, eight, 10 months?
We have some information. We don't have any numbers from the state. Those were from the Illinois Municipal League numbers, and the facilities who have put those machines is, says the real numbers exceed them by quite a bit.
Okay.
I've never really played one of the video machines. I mean, I've played slot machines and stuff, but is there a noise issue? I mean, are these things very noisy? I don't know.
It's adjustable.
The noise can be controlled, you know, from volume all the way down to nothing. So, I mean, that's something that we could also have control over, is the noise factor, you know? And I suppose it just depends on what's going on at the time, whether the operator wants to, you know, have the noise thrill or whatever, but that would have a lot to do with what's going on there, too. But I would think, generally speaking, they're going to be pretty quiet. You also brought the idea of the aesthetics and that type of thing. There's many, many different machines in which to choose from, some very glitzy in nature, and I'm sure some very toned down in nature, too, and we'd be very careful, you know, to those that would be...would fit in better with what goes on there.
How long is that wall there, Bob? Do you know?
The biggest one?
How long is that wall?
Twenty feet.
I think it's about 18 feet, I believe it is, 18 to 20 feet.
Did you guys try to approximate, you know, the width in these pictures?
Well, they're not approximate.
Mayor, those pictures are to scale.
Yeah, they are to scale, yeah.
Because I think the ones that I've seen in Bannerman's don't seem this big and bulky.
Yeah, I noticed that, too, when we were there the other night. That was the first time I'd seen them. They are relatively narrow, and they're not very deep.
Mayor, the pictures that you see, unlike Bannerman's, that includes the depth of the chairs, so the individuals playing at the machines would increase the depth of the playing area.
Okay.
Is there anyplace else at the golf course we could put the machines, so it wouldn't necessarily be in the bar area?
Not that would be in view of a qualified employee at all times.
Okay.
Yeah. Nick, because you're ruining my chip stand here. You're not going to move the chip stand.
We can move to the other one.
Would it be standard policy, hole-in-one gets $1 free to pull the...
Well, I just had some thoughts on this, and I appreciate the fact that the staff is always looking for income facilities. However, in this case, I...it bothers me a bit that the village...that this is the image the village wants. It bothers me a bit that with all the other devices in town, that we're going to be in competition with them. It bothers me a bit the configuration. I don't...I just don't think it's going to look very good. And with high-top tables, you're talking about smaller tables, is that correct?
Yeah, they're tall, smaller, right? Smaller diameter, right?
There isn't enough room. There just isn't enough room. It's a beautiful golf course. I don't know why we want to mess it up like that, but that's just...that is just my opinion. But most importantly, I question whether that's the image we want the village to have.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Was there any thought, and I do tend to agree with TL in many ways, was there any thought...I know that you've kind of...the pro golf shop is probably every inch is used in that area, but was there ever any consideration of downsizing the pro shop to be able to put the machines in the pro shop?
As a matter of fact, we did talk about that. The problem is that will put you in a position of spending money to move walls over there that isn't currently available to hope that we're able to make money off of the games, and it seemed more reasonable as a trial period not to have another capital investment out there simply to provide for gaming. Makes it a little bit more difficult there also, because don't you think you have the consistency of view of the machines that the law requires us to have?
You'd have someone watching.
Okay.
Well, in terms of the trial period, what would you suggest is a duration?
I think you should try it for six months.
Is there any other options here? Can we have another set of eyes, another committee review this, the potential on this?
One of the things that I was going to suggest, Mayor, is this decision may tie into the discussion that you have asked that the board should have at the next committee meeting, and so I think that to hold this off, this discussion, or to at least combine it with that discussion on committee next time, does seem to make some sense.
Yeah, I think that would be wise. Give us all a chance to think about it a little bit and then tie it into the, you know, potential of these other additional, only-for-gaming-type facilities that are potentially coming into the village. That would be a good idea, I think. Thank you.
So, if there's nothing else, then we'll just move the discussion along to the next step.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you. If there looks like the final agenda item, I entertain our motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Hammer, seconded by Trustee Martin. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Returned.